Have everyone's come be with us. For our chief got a quarter from Southern Torres. What's your name?
Tyler Pruitt.
Good to have you with us tonight. I'm gonna start out the asking of our chief for the length of people leave some prayers now.
That's right. Heavenly Father, oh God, we just come to you tonight, Father. We're thankful for the blessings of life. We're thankful for the opportunity, God, to serve in our community. I'm only thankful for each and every one that make up that community. I pray that you're him. What we're blessed upon us, God, is we go out and perform our duties. Working out with others. I pray that he would put a special hand over our police department or fire department, God, and we're those that continue to serve you day in and day out. And what I pray that you would bless us meeting tonight. Father, I pray that everything will be done according to your will, Father. And we pray that you bless us time. And we ask your blessings upon it in Jesus' name.
We've had time right over the meeting. Ministry of the last meeting. We need a moving secretary through those.
Make a motion, secretary.
Secretary.
Have a moving secretary set the next shred on where that hit on the center. Any opposed? Most you care. Jason Higgins was supposed to been on Jim, but he's called, can't make it, so. Pass that off, but you don't know anything.
He just told me that I might mention the Fall League. See what your thoughts were on the Fall League. And if you would like to. He said that there's only been just a few to even mention being interested in it. So, I don't know. I feel like he needs to be the one to talk to you about it.
Police chief, give me a call.
All right. Activity from May 1st to May 31st, 2017. We had 121 citations, which is up from April of 79. We had 12 I and O reports. Had 29 arrests. We worked two parking lot wreck reports and one roadway wreck. We checked 33 businesses. We dispatched 28 calls. We was called to assist other departments 17 times. And we assisted six citizens. In other business, the Roger from our insurance was here last week and doing an annual meeting, going over everything. They offer a system called FATS. It's firearms training system. What it is, it's a big screen. I think it's probably take up like that wall right there, not that half of it. And they bring, it's got weapons with it that are charged with air cartridges. And the screen gives you scenarios based off real life situations where people are armed. You communicate with the screen and you got a firearms instructor that operates a computer system where it's just push a button for this scenario, this scenario. And based off how the officers are talking to the person on the screen and everything, you can either de-escalate the situation. You can either escalate the situation, whichever one. But it comes with a sidearm. It comes with pepper spray. It comes with taser. It comes with a long gun. Do all kinds of different scenarios on the screen. You get certain amount of training hours for it. I believe if you complete the whole system, you get two hours per officer. That's if the officer hasn't already had it. But they offer the system to us since we are on the, with insurance for free. There has to be a firearms instructor there, which I am, and I can operate it. But they will also notify any other department in the area that we're gonna have it. And we get it for a week long. So, what they ask for us to do is to open it up to any other departments that wanna send officers over here to use it too. So, that's what I was gonna ask you guys about and make sure that. I know that pretty much the only time we use the courtroom, I think the downstairs, I looked at it, Nick, it's gotta be at least a 25 by 25 room, which would disqualify us. And it has to be nearly darkened out. This room right here is nearly completely dark with the lights out. So, it would work for it. But like I said, it's free charge, but I have to notify them and they'll let me know when it's available, because they, I think they got three different systems and they should, they just bounce them around all over the state to different departments to use. So, if y'all are okay with it, like I said, it'd be free charge. Even if it's just our guys that go through it, we'll get through it. But it's also, it's always good for the mayors, the council members, if y'all wanna come up and go through it. Like I said, it's got, the weapons are charged by CO2. They bring in CO2 canisters and everything. You just recharge them. The weapons have the recoil to it, everything. It's all real and they got holsters and everything. They give you scenarios and just talk to, they even have marksmanship things where, scenarios where they set up targets on it and you shoot and it, you know, gives you scores and stuff like that. Anybody on our insurance, they want us to, you know, ask to recommend to come up and go through it if you like to and go through different scenarios.
I don't like any kind of training like that. Just plus, I mean, I would have to go.
I was gonna run it by you, because I know as far as the courtroom goes, we'll have it for a week. So, it'll fully, it'll fully take up the room in here. I mean, so we'll have to move some chairs around, stuff like that. I'll just make sure as long as it ain't court and council meeting, then everything should be okay, unless y'all know some other reason why not. So, that's the reason I'm asking you guys about it.
What if Wes does it to you, don't tell nobody how bad it do?
No. I'll keep it a secret. Accidentally shoot the wrong person or something like that.
Or you gonna set us up?
I just gonna run it by you guys and if it's okay with y'all, I'll go ahead and contact and let the police get me on a list and try to get it in here.
Do we don't have a room being that full there at the senior citizen building?
I don't know. I just know they're in and out of there, but too, so I don't know.
Well, it's true.
And with it, with the.
I didn't know.
With the equipment being here, I think it'd be easier for us to keep up with like, I don't think any of it is, I know that which the guns and stuff, if I'm not here, I'd be locking them up behind my office. But I know that there's the big CO2 canisters that they bring in. It's a projector that they set up and a screen and stuff too. So, I'd feel better with it here than over there if it running out. I think any good guess? You have any questions or concerns for me?
All the cars, everything still, everybody get?
Yeah, I need to get the strapping off that one. It's ready to sail it as far as that, everything's good.
I'm waiting on the strapping on that one.
Yeah, I just gotta take it off. I think we've got the concrete supposed to be getting poured for the firing range coming up on Thursday. So, I may come in that day and just plan on doing it, because all we gotta do is lay it out. So, just come in, strap it, because it's hot enough now. Should be able to get that stuff to come out.
We saved the gain, I got a couple of heat guns.
Yeah, hopefully any of you, any of that stuff. The less heat the better right now, so. Anything else?
It stopped me and the guy was gonna go ahead and start today.
Oh, he did?
So, because he was wanting to see about getting partial payment. And I said, if you'll go ahead and get me there, boys, I'll have him pay third day.
I wish, I have, I was supposed to lay it out for him. Is he already safe? I might go out of here, go learn, make sure it's forming up in the right place and then go over here.
No, exactly, are you putting?
It's for the shooting lanes for, at the five yard line, the 10, the 15, the 25 and 50, 30 foot sidewalk, it needs one of the shooting lanes.
You mentioned it, I just forgot what it was.
So, once they get that poured, we got, we got all the dirt brought in, leveled out and things. So, once we get it poured, maybe we can get everything back to growing some grass.
I don't know if he wanted to hear it in the way I because I did not.
I know that we was talking, we talked to him on the phone. We told him we was gonna lay it out for him, like put the corner and the sidewalk out for him, so he can just form it from there. I'll run over and make sure if he's over there, see if, make sure it's laid out right. Unless y'all need something else.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Now, our chief's report.
Before you, it's last month's activity. Of course, the whole business, pretty much what we talked about last month. My son's come took care of, just waiting on a few things. Not much new business, still working on our ISO stuff, which is, you know, yearly. I do have before you a estimate on a new service that's offered that would greatly benefit us as the fire department, not only for time, but also for ISO, which is a host testing company that actually comes out and actually will do all of our host testing in-house. All we have to do is provide a site and a water source. County Association, as y'all know, I'm vice president of it. We've been talking about this for several months now. And it's been brought up on county level to hopefully do this on a countywide state. That way, we can get this done at a cheaper rate. Y'all know we do the pump testing yearly, which what we've done is combined that with other departments and offered at a discounted rate, because we hope, we, for the tests out here for that, which they cut us a good deal now. The same way, if we decide to go this route on our host testing, basically, we're looking at going from 21 cents a foot, that's how they charge, down to about 17 cents a foot, which we're looking at anywhere from going from 1,700 to about $1,400. Host testing is, is one of the things you hate to do, but you have to do it. It's very time consuming. One of those things that it takes us as an apartment about three, four months to do. So, you consider that with the hydrant testing and everything else we got going on. You know, I would like to look at going this route this year to see how this works out for ISO. Plus, it gives us more training time, but I'm not doing those other things. Because a lot of that's based off how many you have show up, you know? So, this company can pretty much come in and do the whole kit and bolt from A to Z, all the trucks, all the spur hose, everything. They bring in a crew. And this is basically all they do, they travel and do this. So, there's the estimate before you. Not only that, they did add in, I had them just throw this number in for our ladder testing. That's something that we haven't had done, that needs to be done. Basically, what they do is they come in and do a load test and check the heat sensors on our ladders to make sure everything's still good. Our ladders are still safe and that they're not out for failure, which is conducted of doing a bend test on those. They weight the middle and see that, how the strength of the ladder holds up. So, that's, I've, price added into that, that's the $152. So, I'd like for, I'd like for, to recommend that we try this this year and see how it works. The next page over kinda gives you a little background on the company. This company has a local office, so it's not, they're not actually coming from way up north, from New Jersey. They're in A-Rap this week doing host tests. I spoke with them. They don't have any problems with them. They've done a great job. So, I think it's something that's worth looking into for us as far as time and, and all. I think it would be beneficial to try it at least this year and sell without it.
How much is the department, I think you've been spending overall, like you've been doing it?
It's really hard to say though. I mean, you figure the work days, the main hours, I mean, make it out of. You know, five HOs is our biggest thing, because you have to unload every bit of it and, you know, and test it, which, you know, we got too many engines that carry five HOs. But, I mean, you gotta get it right back on. The hand lines and the pre-connects are not as viable, because if something happens, you can drop what you're doing. We test over on Industrial Boulevard up there in the vine. So, if something happened, we could just drop what we had and go on, you know? But for us, it's, it's time consuming, you know, over several months to get it all done.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
We have to deal with TVA. There was a bunch of us out there. It took, it took a long time for us.
Thank you. Partner, you have that money, okay?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's no problem at all. No problem at all. If y'all are okay with that, I'd like to go ahead and make contact with them, because we are looking at it on a county level. This past week was our association meeting. And I think we got a list of several departments. So, if y'all are good with it, I'd like to go ahead and get on the list and get ours scheduled, so we can get that done and knock out.
Moving a second.
I'll put it in form of a motion, then you may have to do it.
I'll say. We have a moving a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most you care.
I appreciate it. I don't have anything else on my side, you know?
Thank you. Next is your clerk's report.
Well, I did not type anything out, because I put it all under other business. As you can, you can all see, but there's several, several items that have come up that I think that I needed to discuss individually. And you all have some stuff too. So, could we just skip my report and go on to the other things and then discuss those on one-on-one in the other business?
Our next agenda is review of the Ucal Cherokee County Gas District franchise ordinance. I talked with Mayor Cagro this past week. He was trying to get some more information on the number of residents and things. And he recommends that we review the contract for one year to give time to get all the information on the number of residents that's on natural gas and see what's going on instead of going 30 a year like it's been at the past. So, it's fair.
One year.
Moving a second to review this then.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Let's make a motion that we go ahead and put it in next, for one year only.
A second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most you care for one year to review.
The next item, we need to suspend Rose Ward.
All right. This next item is adopt resolution 2017 dash 06 dash 12, authorizing the town to enter into a contract with land environmental consultants incorporated on the LMCF splash pad project. So, we need a moving a second to.
Make a motion to suspend Rose Ward.
A second.
Second. I'm gonna say to suspend Rose Ward.
Land branch, read that.
State of Alabama Town of Five Resolution 2017 dash 06 dash 12. It's a resolution authorizing for the contracting of professional engineering services in support of LWCF project number 15 dash LW dash 1017. Whereas the Town of Five has received an LWCF grant to provide for the construction of a splash pad at its town park. And whereas to this end, the town is in need of professional engineering services, professional engineering services to design, bid, and oversee the aforementioned project. And whereas the Town of Five has advertised for received and evaluated requests for statements of qualifications for said engineering services. And whereas the firm of land environmental consultants has received the highest R and Q evaluation and upon further negotiations indicated that it can perform said services within the budget the town has available and shall hold said offering of services until open, I'm sorry, until open, until said project's release of funds is made. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Town of Five does hereby authorize the offering to land environmental consultants of said contract to provide the professional engineering services for the project as provided for under all applicable ADECA slash LWCF guidelines. And further it be resolved that the Town, that the Five Town Council herewith authorizes the mayor upon notice of the authorization to spend slash release of said grant funds to enter into a contract with land environmental consultants to provide said services for a fee not to exceed $12,636 adopted this 12th day of June 2017. And if that didn't sound right, so, I can't say anything. What this is, is we set out for bids. We put out advertisement for bids. And we only received two, two R and Qs, which is, you know, basically, like I said, is the request for statements of qualifications. So, one being from land and one, one, let's see, where is that? And one being from car and associates engineers. The points given to each, this was done by three separate people. Gerald, Ms. Katie, and Paul being the three that went and performed the evaluations. And the points, you know, that were given were good, you know, here for this one and good here for this one. So, I mean, either way, like I say, this is, this is just a step in the process for the, the grant process. So, so it was determined, the points were based on qualifications, experience, and capacity. And it was determined that land, you know, would be the one, that would be the company chosen. This is, you know, I mean, this, like I said, that was the only two ballots and medals that we received. And now we've come down to this, and this is when we can go ahead and get started on the next, the next steps, but we have to do this, this first, so.
If we discuss, we need this one kind of.
Oh, yeah.
I need to go ahead and move and check to. Check damage.
Go back in. We go into.
Rest.
Yes, reinstate the rules of order.
Now, moving a second to go back and reinstate the rule of order.
Make a motion to reinstate the rest of order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Now, we need a moving a second to enter into contract with land.
Make a motion that we go forth and enter into the contract with land as our next step.
A second.
Moving a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Still against it.
Most you care, Dan.
You have to move, I seen other business.
I know. I do apologize. I, I could've just put it in my clerk's report and been done with it, but with so many, I feel like that there'll be, you know, that we need approval to do some of this stuff. I would rather not have it all into a separate report, so. And if you want me to.
No, you go ahead and raise your hand.
The request for the beauty shop, well, I had a phone call and request for a beauty shop at a residence on Marion Lane. Mr. Spee, I mean, Mr. Green knows which residence, you're familiar with the residence that it's at. I know that most of the residences in, in that subdivision is, are one, it's resident, it's residential, but there are, you know, there have been exceptions. So, I wanted to kinda get your idea as to what you thought, you guys thought on.
Who is it?
That not needed to go before.
It, well, generally, we have a representative from the zoning board here, so generally, we have a representative from the zoning board here. So, I can do that. And then I can bring this back up and then I can bring this back up the next meeting.
We can be the same, dude.
Okay.
We, we've had that come up before, I think. But it's been so long ago, I don't remember exactly how.
We got a tax service back there on the back.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't.
On the next thing, the waterworks board has requested that the council and industrial board, which I have talked to Reggie on this, to get, consider a right-of-way from the lift station in the industrial park to the Morning Glory. Morning Glory is wanting to hook up to the sewer, which is the assisted living there on 75. Now, it's not a long distance at all. If you, if you look at the aerial view, you'll see. And when I was speaking with Reggie, he, he seemed to think that it might not hurt to go ahead and have, as long as it's laid out, you know, in, in an area where it wouldn't have to be moved. Of course, the water board said that they would move any lines if someone come in and bought the property, they would move it to, of course, accommodate whomever. But if we do, if we're able to get businesses in the industrial park at some point in time, we'll have to go, we'll have to run sewer anyway. So, it might help. It might help, I don't know. It might be something to consider.
We just need somebody to look at the right-of-way, trying to plan out of the right-of-ways.
The biggest concern that Reggie had was.
To be, you know, more out of the way.
To lay out the acres, so that that way it would be, you would be out of the way of any.
I'd suggest having water board to submit a layout.
Draw one.
And split it over.
May I say, I would've thought that already been on the biggest one.
Yeah.
You and me both, I didn't know that it wasn't. The only other option that they would have is to, because didn't they stop right there where the four lane widens out at, and where they stopped with the last project? So, they would have to carry it down, straight down 75. And so, on the next item, I, I never knew this, and I should have, but on Main Street, where the Old Town Hall was, was First Street. And across the road was First Street by August. So, but down there in the curve, where it goes back to Blackwell, it turned into First Avenue. So, 911 needed to give some addresses to the new apartments that have been built. And she said, we need to either make it First Street East and have a First Street West, or just make that road First Avenue. And so, after speaking with the mayor, I think we all said, we'll just move that from the curve to the Main Street and make that street First Avenue and have a First Street and then that one, First Avenue and be done with it. So, that's.
Was that done to begin with, maybe because avenues run a certain direction, streets run another direction? You know what I'm saying? In a lot of towns, that's the way avenues run, run like. Yeah, north to south, and then the others, you know?
Or east and west.
Yeah, whichever, one runs east, west, one runs north and south. And that may be what, what they done. But I might give, yeah, I'm fine, I'm gonna do, I'm gonna be better just to make it all First Avenue.
I had a gentleman, of course, I don't have the name on here, it's down there in my office, but requested because of children playing, they requested speed bumps for Brian Drive.
Are they playing in the road?
Well, that's, that was my, I wanted to, to ask. I don't know. I guess because of the speeding. Um, the next item is a streetlight request for intersection of Bolden and Trailer Street East and County Road fifty. Um, and then at, at or near fifty-eight, ten, County Road seventy-two. James, you went out and checked this. Can you give a little bit more description?
Yeah. Uh, there's the corner of, uh, Bolden and Trailer. Uh, there's a pole there in the corner, puddle out there. Uh, somebody requested this, uh, here to the Golden, maybe get one up there. Anyway. But, uh, anyway, Board Graven is, uh, the road fifty down there, seventy-two. Uh, his curve there between him and his daughter. And they said if, uh, people ran off the road because you can't see the curve or whatever, they want them streetlights up there.
All right.
Get your headlights fixed.
Because of the county, it's not being lined on the sides. It's, I guess it is harder to see in, in darker areas. Um, I, I don't have it on here, but also there was, um, a lady that requested a streetlight on, just down below where Officer Anderson lives. Is that fried up that he was on? Um...
Yeah.
Fried up. Um, anyway, that, um, she lives in that dip where, um, where...
Yeah, Wilton.
Yes, yes.
Pretty dark down there.
It is. Um, but I, I, I looked, and there is one, and there, but there's two poles in between. So, I don't know that, that we could, um...
Be too close together.
Don't be too close to them.
I'll go down and look.
Maybe after the lights come on, just make sure that one's not just burned out or something.
Yeah.
But, back to...
But if people go, if people drive high for the speed limit at night with their, and they got good lighting on their vehicle, they're not gonna be running off the road that they can see, right? I mean, that's kinda odd.
So, we all do, but it's pretty light to put them up.
You don't want overseas, Adam, put it in your hands to judge it, for what I'm concerned.
I think I need to go ahead and question, tell them on that, so... Especially down on, uh, Tiki and, uh, there are Bowles and Trailers, we...
I think it's the question.
See Bowles? We're boards that had to pay all, pay the, any of the expense that would be, would be to get run up that...
We're both in street.
That's kind of a great way to sound, but we're...
You're turning that to left with racetrack.
Yeah, okay, okay. That's what I was...
So, all are in agreement to that, right?
Yeah, we're out to, I mean...
And that's the next item. Um, this attorney, she, she was in Rainsville at one point in time. I remember her as Abby Here, um, she's now Abby Clarkson. Um, she's in Birmingham, and she called Ms. Katie, um, and left her a message. And, uh, Ms. Katie just handed it over to, um, the mayor. Uh, she called in regards to a class action lawsuit of Oxy Cotton, uh, against her own Oxy Cotton, I'm correct when I say that. Um, and they're, they're needing a town, or a city in Alabama, and why five was chosen because we don't have any kind of clinics around or anything like that. But anyway, she, she wanted to see if, if we would be interested. So, I don't know, I think Paul talked to you a little bit about it.
He's interested in what?
Yeah, interesting as being a representative, no, being a representative to sue the makers of this drug. In other words, do we want our name, our, our small town name in, in, on headlines?
Mayor talked to me about this last week. He has contacted Jason Carroll, to him check into it. I don't really know all of the situations. I can't figure out why somebody in Birmingham would come all the way to five.
Yeah, we were very, uh, the, wanna do it. I stated, I guess, uh...
We need to table it.
I think we need to table this until our lawyer gets it checked out, see what's, what all...
Table this during next meeting.
And, uh, final, um, subject under other business is the request for assistance with cutting back trees from right-of-way on Camp Lane. Um, Angie Kemp, the one that normally is here, I had spoken with her outside of here. And, um, her husband actually asked me, Chris, her husband actually asked me what they do about seeing, about getting some assistance from the town. And apparently, it's trees that are growing over end of the road. And I know that the Boy Scouts helped us with some of the, with trimming, and, and we get help a lot from the county. Um, I don't know exactly all that there is they have to do, but maybe that might be something you could change into.
Yeah, uh, it was, uh, Sid, David Thompson, and, uh, see if they could, uh, bring it to, uh, leash hog that's on the side of...
We were just down Johnny Road in...
That was the town, yes.
Who almost brought me down to that? Who almost brought me down to Johnny Road, to yesterday Christmas?
Uh, I don't know. Was that, is that?
Hick, the Hick who lived down there.
I don't know. He didn't tell me the name. He just said the neighbor, so, right before you get there. So, it was...
The guy on the palm shop.
Well, I don't know. I haven't, uh...
If it's, if it's right-of-way, if it's right-of-way, it's, it, it should be out.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's hanging in the right-of-way, I don't...
You know, like, you want one of that.
Well, one of, I went, I went and thinned one day, and I was, crap, I was far from here to, I don't know, halfway, halfway across the parking lot. And a be, a stick about this long, like that be around, get me around the middle of the windshield. I done went past it before it got laid, and it just, bam! You probably didn't necessarily want this. I was thinking, man, if I've been on a motorcycle, I've been hurting.
Yeah.
Any other new visits? All right, next, uh, item is vouchers. Voucher number four-seven-nine-two-nine-fourty-eight.
Make a motion to himself to back, well, to his written, as written.
Uh, Man Fred was looking for one a while ago. Peoples Independent Bank, eighteen-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars for office supplies, quick books, posters, and fowl. What is that?
That's the credit card. And that's when the police officers order you to form, or if I can find something for cheaper than what I can get it for, if, or, you know, I, I always bargained, you know, to get it for cheaper. So, I'll use a paper.
I'm just wondering why I was all on Peoples Independent Bank. I didn't understand.
We, we used to write it to Horizon Bank, and now it's Peoples Independent Bank.
Yeah, I mean, I'm...
I just give it them to their older friend. They get it for us, all their stuff.
Okay.
I guess I have a hundred.
Move in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of paying the vouchers, say, um, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion care.
Make a motion with a jury.
With a jury.
You're not used to this.
No, I got...
Ah, okay.
Usually tie up over here on that.
Good to have you. Be with us tonight.
Hey, no problem.